I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. This is the School District of Waukesha Board of Education meeting for April 11th, 2018. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusing.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
And Joseph Pomel.
Here. And Sue, have we been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. You might have noticed that we have some new desks and carpeting and paint. I don't think we've had an upgrade to this room.
A long time.
Decades. Yeah, so.
I've been here 18 years, so this is my first time.
Yes, yes. So, thank you to those who put the hard work in. This is wonderful. We appreciate it very much. This evening, we were gonna have bright lights, but that will be pushed out to next month. We have some national merit finalists that represent our district quite well, and they had some scheduling conflicts as they are very busy students, as you probably could guess, and we will have them at our meeting next month, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will get going with our recognitions. First, Chris Hedstrom will recognize Denise Holtermann. Denise, would you please come forward? Welcome, Denise.
I'm pleased to inform the board that the Employee Recognition Award, now, this was actually for March, but that just didn't work out, but we're doing it this month, but it's being presented this evening to Denise Holtermann. Denise has been working as a school occupational therapist with the School District of Waukesha since 2011, and she's currently at East High School, but she goes to a variety of schools across our district. Denise's nominators begin by saying that Denise is a committed professional occupational therapist who is attentive to the unique needs of her students in the context of their learning environments. She uses her knowledge base and experience to work with teachers, assistants, and parents. She establishes goals and implements strategies that support the individual needs of students who need to access their education in a specialized way. Denise sees to it that her work with students' motor development includes attention to the expectations of the school setting and the commitment to college, career, and community readiness, and her students enjoy their relationships with her. She is thoughtful about their personal experiences, warm and friendly in her interactions. Denise's work with colleagues is true to the mission of collaborating for success -- excuse me, for success in the classroom. She is an example of commitment to quality service to students and their families for educational success. Denise has been consistently outstanding. Her lessons and activities are very creative, engaging, and student-focused. Her communication with staff is superb, and her dedication to her job and students is extremely evident. Denise is in a unique position that requires her to travel between and meet with several different students in several different buildings. She is very dependable and on time. If she has a conflict with a student's meeting time, she always finds time to reschedule and make up the lesson. In addition to the wonderful services and support she provides for her students, she is always willing to help out and collaborate on ideas for all students of concern. Denise's above-and-beyond actions, positive attitude, and helping heart have helped establish good working relationships between staff members and positively impacts the success of our students. This was written -- the nomination was written by a teacher at Blair Elementary School. Today Denise brought her husband with her, and her supervisor is Patty Havel, who's also here. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I'd like to congratulate Denise Holtermann on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta see something.
We'll encourage you.
At the podium.
It's really nice to get this recognition. I really appreciate that very much. The thing that I most appreciate is when I see a student make gains that they weren't expected to make. I work with special needs kids, and just yesterday, I was working with a three-year-old girl who's got a lot of disabilities, and for the first time, she sat on the floor and played unassisted. She sat by herself for the first time and joined in with the music class in her grade, so it was awesome. And that's the best kind of reward I get for my job, but thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Denise. We do have a few other recognitions. We did have an election just recently. Congratulations to Mr. O'Brien and Mr. McCaffrey, and we have Mrs. Voight, I think, in the audience, who will officially be sworn in. It's her first term. You'll be sworn in, I believe, the 23rd of April, I think, is when that will happen. Patrick, how many terms is this for you now?
It's gonna be my fifth term.
Term. And Kurt, how many years?
I had to ask the manager, and I guess it's
A bunch?
Probably like my 15th one-year term or something like that.
So, a bunch. A bunch. But back in December, Patricia Madden made a big decision to not be put on the ballot again. And Pat, this is officially your last meeting with us, and you have served on the board for 15 years, three full terms, beginning back in 2003. You have had many positions with us. You've been our board clerk since 2006. You've chaired the Human Resources Committee, the Policy Committee, and Compensation Committees, and over the years, you've served on Human Resources, Policy, Finance and Facilities, Legislative Committee, which we no longer have, so going back a few years, so many of you remember that committee when we did have that, consensus bargaining, many of those. We were just joking about how long some of those meetings and mediations used to go or can go. Ask-me bargaining, negotiations team, and many expulsions. That's kind of the toughest thing that we do as board members, is to determine whether or not to expel students. The other stuff is way better. And you also served as a CISA One representative. You've always been, have had, brought a wealth of knowledge, Pat, to all of the meetings and have debated quite well. I have a few words that I just, I was reflecting upon your years of service, and I have just six or seven words that I thought I would share to describe, Pat, and hopefully you would all agree with me on these. Pat's straightforward. Pat's thoughtful. She's intelligent. She's reliable. She's very professional, and she is of the highest in integrity. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, Pat, all these years, and you will be dearly missed, and we have a small token of appreciation for the years that you've put in, and I'd like to present to you.
Nice.
Would you like to say a few words, Pat?
Well, I've never been at a loss for words, so I might as well take my opportunity. It frankly has been my privilege to work with all of you and to listen to my constituents through the years. I sometimes didn't vote the way I personally thought I should, but from what I was getting from my constituents, I voted the way they wanted, because they're the ones that put us here in office, and so that always came first with me. And I guess it started when I worked for the county, because I was also in elected position, so this is going to be seven and five, I think, like 12 different times that I've been on the ballot in Waukesha County, so.
Yes.
That name will be missed, and that's okay, because I'm gonna look for some more volunteer work to do when I get back from Tucson, because I'm heading there tomorrow morning. Think I need a break from this lovely spring weather we have, but truly, I thank the administration. They're all wonderful people. The board's been marvelous, worked with the teachers. I really didn't think I'd enjoy it as much as I have, and one of our great things we did in the 15 years was hire Todd Gray.
Absolutely.
Because he is a super leader, and he will continue to do that, I'm sure. If not, just call me up.
Well, thank.
But thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else wanna?
Oh, that's enough.
Okay. All right. Straightforward, I'm telling you, straightforward, and always respectful. Okay, like Pat Madden said, we're moving on to the Student Representatives Report tonight. We have Angie and Matt, who are representing North. Please come forward and tell us what's happening at North.
Like he said, my name is Angie. I'm a senior at North High School, and I'm heavily involved in our drama club department. I am a stage manager and head of all the costumes and wardrobe that goes on with all of our shows.
I'm Matt Hallett. I'm also a senior. I was part of the volleyball team and swim team. I was at Catlin Beach, and then I was also part of the Athletic Advisory Council and the marching band, so, yeah.
So, we're here to tell you what our clubs and activities and sports have been up to at North. So, of course, my favorite, our drama club department. In February, we finished with our musical, which was nine to five. It went really well. We had a lot of good turnouts every night, which is a shocker, and we had good reviews from students at the school and in our community. We are currently working on our spring play, which is the drama. It's called "A Murderer Is Announced." It's about an ad that gets put in the local paper that says, "At 6:30 on October the 13th, a murder will be announced at this address," and then, obviously, a murder takes place, and it's your job to figure out who did it. We open the first weekend in May, and tickets are $6. We are also planning our end-of-the-year banquet, which is carnival-themed this year, so we're hoping to have a lot of fun carnival-themed games, and we're all gonna dress up as cool carnival characters. Our choir department had our Pops concert at South High School with the Butler Choirs, which is always a fun concert to do. It's so amazing to work with all the younger kids, and I remember being in middle school, and I was like, "I wanna be in a high school choir like that." So, it's so cool to see, like, in awe about how shocked they are about how well we can sing. Our concert choir recently, at the end of May, went on a tour around Wisconsin. They sang at the Capitol, which is so cool and amazing. They also sang at Whitefish Bay, which is where our choir teacher attended high school, and they ended the trip with going to see Les Mis in Appleton, which is amazing. Les Mis. Our yearbook. We just finished our yearbook. We have 40 yearbooks left, but I think when we left class today, it was like 38, which is amazing. At our 450-goal, we're working on a fundraiser to get a nice copy of the senior supplement, which is all the spring sports and activities that we don't get to see because they're in next year's yearbook. So, we've obviously graduated, so we're trying to fundraise to get a nice copy made for all of our seniors. So, we've been trying to get out in the community and see what fundraisers we can do.
All right, so, boys track, they won third at the indoor conference meet, and had several athletes break their personal records. I also heard today in math class that our four-by-one team is the fastest in state so far, so.
Nice.
Yeah, the girls' track team improved from last place to fourth place in the indoor conference meet last Saturday, and, like I said, we have relays, individuals who are hoping to see at the state track this year. This tennis team, they have all-new coaches this year, and so far, it's been a smooth adjustment. They had a match last night against McWanego, but unfortunately, it resulted in a loss, and they're hoping to get back on it. Today at practice, it seemed pretty good from what I saw. The marching band, the season just started, and so far, they had a lot of new members, and they're excited with all the new faces out.
So, our softball team is currently killing the game out there. They are 3-0 right now. They beat Union Grove, Tulsa East, and they beat Waukesha West last night, 4-0. The Union Grove game was a very, very huge win for them. They are a very high-competition team, so it was very cool that they beat them, I think, 3-0, which is very cool. Their game this week, they play South and CMH and are hoping to carry the winning streak. Our key club in January made 10 tie blankets for Children's Hospital, and they volunteered at the Waukesha Jamboree. In February, their biggest event was organizing the T-shirt sales and the Orange Out Basketball Game for the benefit game, which is for one of our students' brother who was diagnosed with leukemia. They made six dozen fleece and tennis dog toys to give away to surprise for all the dog-owning staff at Hawes, and they're currently working on getting everything together for our service learning day that takes place May 25th.
We have a shout-out from Maddie Warren. She won a Gold Key Award in the Wisconsin Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Her work was recognized at the national level and will be displayed at the Carnegie Hall starting at June 7th. Maddie and her parents will be flying out to New York City so she can be recognized as less than 1% of the submissions were chosen, so congratulations to Maddie. The golf team, the North Booster Club helped them purchase new rain gear, which is fabulous and we received $700 from them for unlimited golfing range balls and at the tee-up at Cleveland Avenue. They have a young, eager squad, and they are looking forward to the conference play, which begins April 16th for the varsity team. Ice fishing club, it's a new one. It's new at North. It was started by two freshman boys, and so far, it's been looking pretty good. As of right now, they have 15 members, and they're expected to get 30 members in the next year. They have five dads who help them out every time they go out, and they provide the shelter, food, and they love teaching the kids how to ice fish. At the Kettle and Rain Tournament, their first one, they placed 14 out of 18 schools and caught seven fish, and they signed up for three tournaments for next year and plan to go to state to compete with 96 other teams. DECA, in January, North sent 25 students to the district career competition, and four other students, four students qualified for state from North for March 7th. Yeah? March 5th, 7th, yes.
Yeah, you got it.
Yes, yes.
Our AP classes are working really hard to prep for the AP test that are right around the corner. They actually started pre-registration for the test tomorrow. The AP numbers are growing more and more each year. More kids are signing up for AP classes, which is always a really good thing to see. Our AP English classes, the 11th graders take the language AP test, so they're working on impromptu essays, and they're also working on multiple-choice practice. And in AP Psych, they're organizing student teams to participate in a quiz bowl at KM in order to help prepare for their test. Avid, they are excited that our second classes of Avid students will be starting next fall. All of the interviews, acceptance letters, and signing ceremonies have been completed, and we look forward to continued success through the use of Avid strategy school-wide. And the last thing is a senior at our school, Caleb and Tony, won the Cole Fellowship Award. So did our teacher, Ms. Monterey. She got gifted a scholarship of $10,000 to go toward her college tuition, which is just incredible. That's all we have for you guys, so thank you for listening to us. Enjoy this lovely spring weather.
We'll give you credit for bringing that in. Are there any questions for our student reps? Really? Wow. I think that's a for Mrs. Reinacek.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you repeat the last couple sentences? The $10,000 for Ms. Monterey, where did that come from?
Oh, it wasn't for Ms. Monterey. That was for the senior who, her name's Kayla. So, it goes to her college tuition, so it's from the Cole Fellowship Scholarship.
Thank you.
Thank you for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Baumgart.
We usually like to know where they're going next.
Sure.
So, I'm gonna ask you where you're going next.
I will be attending Green Bay. I'm going to be majoring in English education and minoring in stage managing to become a drama teacher.
I will be going to University of Wisconsin-Lacrosse, and I'm gonna be majoring in athletic training and then going on to my master's in physical therapy.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Matt. Wish you luck in the future. We're now at the section of our meeting where we have an opportunity for our citizens to address the board. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, fire will give you a signal, and if you could wrap up in the next 30 seconds, we'd appreciate it. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and will refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that may detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones or put on vibrate if you haven't done so already. We do have seven speakers that have signed up, and Steve Schmitz is the first person. Will be followed by Joyce Schmitz.
My wife.
Hi, Steve, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I looked at the address, looked at the name, and I thought, "They must be married."
I'm here once again to ask that you pass a resolution that supports a ban on military-style assault weapons. Next week, Friday, is the 19th anniversary of Columbine, where 12 students and one teacher were killed. Since then, we've had mass shootings in theaters, nightclubs, churches, on city streets, and on college campuses, and of course, at Sandy Hook, where 26 and seven-year-old children were killed, and recently Parkland, where 17 students were killed. Yet, in all but a few states, it's still okay for you and me to buy these weapons without much difficulty. Why is it still okay? It's not the Second Amendment. Last week, yet another court, this one in Massachusetts, said that there is no constitutional right to own military-style assault weapons. Every federal court, every federal court that has addressed this issue has said no constitutional right to these weapons exists, and even the most conservative Supreme Court Justice on matters of constitutional interpretation that we've had in the last 50 years, Justice Scalia suggested as much many years ago. So, why should these weapons still be so readily available, and why would you not want to add your voice to that of other leaders, including many, many school boards, who are saying that for the sake of our children and our communities, these weapons must be banned? I think there are two reasons why it's incumbent on this board to take a position on this issue. First, it is a school safety issue. 20 years ago, maybe not, but today, with all the schoolchildren that have been killed with these weapons, it certainly is. There's no dodging ban. Second, you are elected officials. We, as Mrs. Madden mentioned, are your constituents. As elected officials who ask us to vote for you, it seems to me that you have a responsibility to tell us your position on this. If you don't agree that these weapons should be banned, then say so, so that we know where you stand. But whether you agree or not, we urge you to have an open, public discussion on this and tell us what you think. Mr. President, I prepared a sample resolution for the board to consider, something that the board can maybe use as a starting point for its discussion on this. There is more in this resolution that I prepared than just a statement on assault weapons, because as we all know, in the context of student safety, there are many other things that you need to talk about and address. I brought 10 copies with me, one for each board member and one for Mr. Gray, and if it is okay with you, I would like to leave them with the board secretary and ask that they be passed out.
Yes, we will do so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. We also had passed out the sample resolutions, just so you know, that you gave to us last time. Everyone got a copy of those.
I think those were resolutions from some other school districts.
Yeah, other states, yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Joyce. And then on deck, we will have Lori Van Ternan? How about Kirsten Strom?
He does speak.
Okay. Well, how about if we let Joyce speak, and then I'll go down the list?
In the past month, since I was last here speaking to the board, there have been some relevant organizations who have entered into the discussion of the banning of assault weapons. On March 26th, the Wauwatosa School Board passed a resolution supporting a ban on assault weapons. So, now we have a local school board that has done what we talked about last time, where there were school boards from California to Vermont who had done that as well. The National PTA, the Parent-Teacher Association, issued a position statement which supports federal restrictions on firearms, including outlawing military-style semi-automatic assault weapons. The president of the NEA, the National Education Association, demanded a plan that will keep dangerous weapons out of the hands of dangerous people. She said, and I quote, "Only the United States has such a long, long, long list of mass public murders by a lone gunman. The reason is simple. Our laws allow dangerous people to easily purchase military-style rapid-fire assault weapons. That's the only difference. That's what we need to fix. Thoughts and prayers will not prevent the next tragedy. People rising up will." And that is what I'm asking you all to do, to rise up and pass a resolution to support an assault weapons ban. This should not be controversial, because it's so obviously the right thing to do. Please consider that another local school board took action. A National Parent-Teacher Association took action, and a National Education Association took action, all supporting a ban on assault weapons. The Waukesha Board of Education should demonstrate its commitment to student and faculty safety by doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Harvey Stowe? Welcome back, Harvey.
He's back.
I thought I saw Harvey.
No, I promised you I would behave. I will, I'll try. Good evening. Yes, hi, bud. You've cut me off more than once in my life. But, no, I'm here tonight, obviously, the school board, like thousands of other school boards across the nation are talking about school safety, and it's a very difficult issue, let's be honest. Schools are supposed to be part of a community. You're supposed to welcome people into your schools. Plus, we teach kids to be very, you know, very polite, and if somebody knocks on the door, they're, right, they're bound to let them in. So, it's a difficult task, and I support, obviously, you know, resource officers, cameras in the schools. By the way, cameras in the schools aren't gonna do us any good unless we have somebody watching them who knows what they're doing, who knows that Bobby doesn't belong anymore because he was suspended today, so that takes some communication and what have you. But the reason why I'm here is more and more, and I hear people talking about it, I think you're leaving out, not you, but generically, we're leaving out a real important population. The students aren't just victims, they're part of the solution. There are a lot more of them than there are of us, and you have to ask yourself, "Well, it's their safety, so why aren't they telling us?" We see in Columbine, you mentioned Columbine, you mentioned other places, after the fact, we see that there was a red flag out there. There was something online, these backdoor websites, something was said at Susie's party or at the ballgame, or whatever it may happen to be. So, we gotta ask ourselves honestly, "Why aren't kids telling us?" They don't trust us. Not that they don't like us, but they just don't trust us. That takes a lot of guts for a student to come forward to say, "Hey, Johnny said this, Susie said that. Boy, you oughta go on the website and see what he did with his gun, you know, and all the practice." So, why aren't they doing that? Well, we have educators out there that are trying to get to know kids, but the educators in this room know exactly what I'm talking about. If we don't get to know them, and they don't get to know us, not as a teacher, not as an administrator, not as a secretary, a custodian, a coach... an administrator, not as a secretary, a custodian, a coach, an advisor, what, as a person. And that takes time. As you know, for the last 12 years, I've been a college professor, of statistics per se, okay? And I know the data retreats and the data dives and all the other stuff are important, and you don't have a choice. We need to step back and take time to get to know the kids, because they can help us. And by the way, not just in this area. If they communicate with us, they're gonna help us with bullying, they're gonna help us with drug abuse and everything else. They know what's going on in their environment. We don't, okay? We're the stranger. We need to connect with them. And there are people out there that are doing it, but we, as an organization, need to really make that as a priority and support the people that are trying to do that. Those of you who know us in the room, it does work. And I can tell, if you connect with kids, right, they will come forward and tell you. It's a tough job, I wish you a lot of luck. See, I did behave tonight. And I'll see you in 12 more years. Have a good night.
Thank you. And Edna Pfeiffer? Edna Pfeiffer? Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address us? Okay, thank, thank you. Usually, we don't make comments, and I'm not gonna make a comment, I'm just gonna state a fact. We have been working, I've been working with the superintendent, who's been working with his staff, who's been meeting with other superintendents, sheriffs, police, other people within the county for a few meetings here. And we will be having a board work session on student safety and security coming up here in the next couple of weeks, so.
April 25th at 6:00 p.m.
So, like to just let you know that that's what our plans are. We'll put this on the table. So, thank you, everybody. And moving on to the next part of our meeting, for a minute approval, we do have three sets of minutes to consider. On March 14, 2018, regular Board of Education minutes. March 14, executive session, an hearing that we had. And then March 13, we had an executive session on expulsion, by an expulsion panel. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Barb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda, any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgartner? Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by our superintendent.
Three letters this evening. The first one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight, and he's congratulating Waukesha North High School for winning Sportsmanships Award in Boys Swimming, Wrestling, and Hockey for 2018. The second letter also was from Commissioner Sternig, congratulating Waukesha South High School for winning the same award in hockey for 2018. And finally, again, Mr. Sternig, congratulating Waukesha West High School for winning the Sportsmanship Awards in Boys Swimming, Wrestling, and Hockey. And you wonder how hockey gets to be in all three schools, it's because we have a combined three, three high school teams. So congratulations to all those athletes.
Good news, yes. Thank you, Todd. And moving on to our Waukesha Education Foundation report given by Barbara Brusink.
Thank you.
And welcome back.
The Waukesha Education Foundation team has been very busy. Currently, we are working on promoting the upcoming walk run scheduled for May 12. We would love to see as many school district of Waukesha leaders possible at our walk. Our new executive director has been meeting with board members, district leaders, donors, and community members. She is also connecting with previous grant winners and is learning more about how our organization can continue to positively impact our community. We just closed the 2018, 2018 grant window and are looking forward to reviewing the applications from teachers in the coming weeks and awarding grants at the end of May. We started a campaign on our social media to highlight former grant winners and the success of last year's grant winners and adding a hashtag called #WEFGrantsWork. Check it out on your Facebook, Twitter, or LinkedIn pages and share it with your colleagues. We can celebrate success in our district. We set some dates for future events. The golf outing will be held Tuesday, August 7, at Western Lakes, and our annual reception will be held on November 1. Please mark your calendars and hope that you can all attend. Our annual report was completed and hard copies arrived over spring break. We would be happy to provide one, either in print or electronically, to any board member that would like a copy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Appreciate it. And moving on to our safety committee report given by Ms. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did not meet this week. The meeting has been postponed to next week, Mon, excuse me, Wednesday, April 18, here at the Lindtown Building, Room 109, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to our charter, school, and program report given by Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you. I have a report. Didn't hear much back from many of the places because of being on vacation last week, but I do have one from Summit View. Some interesting points. March 23, 35 visitors from, from a Minnesota school district toured Summit View as they prepare to become a personalized learning district. This tour was arranged through our local CISA and the Institute for Personalized Learning. April 26, 27, and 28, the National Magnet Schools of America Conference in Chicago will be held. Summit View will be receiving 2017 through 2022 national certification. That's a five-year proj, you know, ex, goes on for five years, you know what I mean? National Certification Award. Summit View is one of the first 55 schools in the country to receive national certification that is good for five years. Summit View will also be receiving a National Merit Award 2018 for the Magnet Schools of America School of Distinction. And Jeff is being a little humble on the next one, but I'll say it anyway, that he will be awarded the Region Six Magnet School Principal of the Year Award. Eight of those are given out across the country by region. May 1, State Superintendent Tony Evers will be revisiting Summit View to locally present some MSA, that's the Magnet School of America Award, and recognize the 25th anniversary of the school. And lastly, our spring artist in residence is working with our fourth graders. They are researching and creating, this is interesting, clay coy, this is almost a mouthful, clay coyfish that will be installed in a, in a public art display in the stairwell to the school. And that concludes my report from Summit View.
Say that 10 times, huh?
Yeah, try that, yes. Clay coy. Anyway, great stuff from Summit View.
Yeah. I know when this board approved moving forward with that school, we had high expectations, but, but I, I really think they've been exceeded.
I am.
And just, it's been a fantastic gem for our, for our district. Wow. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Moving on to our consent agenda, we usually start out with public gifts. Darren, Darren doesn't have them, so I-
Doing a, a presentation this evening, so.
I'll, I'll just read through them. I'll try to be Darren. I don't know if I'll be Darren in a good manner, but.
Just be Darren.
There were actually six, six gifts given. Hawthorne Labs School received $500 from Lynn Pascavis to purchase books for the school. They also received $500 from Northwestern Mutual Foundation to match those funds. Waukesha Made Program received $500 from Husky International to offset the manufacturing, automation, design, and engineering costs, the made school, the made program. Waukesha Made received another gift of $1,750 from Aries Industries to be used in the, invested in the made partnership. And this was a second installment of a total gift of $3,500 to the program. Waukesha South received $500 from Tim and Robin Andringa to purchase basketball equipment. Waukesha One Conference received $1,500 from Heartland Business Systems to purchase food for the conference. And then last, Whittier School received $1,836 from St. Luke's Lutheran Church to support the unique needs of their students. Many of these people and organizations have given before, and they're very generous, and we, we thank them for, for their gifts. It's wonderful. Yes, Barb?
Yes, Mr. Gray, are schools out soliciting? Because I think this is wonderful that we have these-
Typically not.
I didn't think so.
Someone may be aware of a program that's out there, but I'm not aware whether they're out actually soliciting for these.
So it's through probably parents or people that live in that community?
Right.
Okay.
Right. You know, I mean, for example, Aries, which, you know, the building is right down here.
Yes, yes.
They've done a tremendous amount with our district. I mean, this, this is just one of many gifts they provided us, along with taking students and, and so on. So I, I, I think it's very typical, because people like a program that they see and they're willing to donate towards it.
Well, we have a good district and people are rewarding us. Thank you.
Yes. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, I will be asking that in a little bit. Your consent agenda also includes items for approval on the March 13 expulsion session, a confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions, as in your Friday packet, packet, along with the minutes included under Item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item separately, we can set that aside. Does, does anybody want this and/or any other items set aside at this time? Okay. Pat Madden, would you please present your last consent agenda?
President, earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of nine resignations, one retirement, and three teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink? Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgartner?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. I'm wiping a tear here. Moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Gray.
Hey, first of all, a couple reminders. We have the board reorganization meeting on April 23 at 5:00 p.m. That will be in the boardroom here. We have a board workshop again on April 25 at 6:00 p.m. I'm hoping at that point, we have our final recommendation from our schools and law enforcement coalition that we've been working with. In addition to that, we, I have to believe we are one of the first districts to write an interest letter to the Department of Justice, we, for their $100 million grant. We are requesting 3.5 million. We think we could actually use a lot more than that, but we, we felt that looking at about $250 per student, which is what that amount would be spread across most of the state of Wisconsin, was a reasonable request. I think, you know, looking at, at some of our referendum planning, we would also supplement this, this amount. But this will give us a nice start in doing some things that will provide some additional safety. Graduation signups who is looking for names to volunteer for North-South-West and E-Achieve, E-Achieve is typically on that following Sunday, but we do need board members to pick, pick a school to volunteer for. So if you have a preference, just let Sue know. Continue to work with the county on a county report card. Last time we talked, it was going to be perhaps school district by school district showing what our academic achievements were based on the, the readiness.org information, along with what kind of work we're doing with our hands-on tech ed programs, career education programs, as well as other demographic information. Now it looks like that is gonna be a combined report that includes information from all schools in Waukesha County as a means to, to show to potential employers, to potential businesses moving in, to what our, our K-12 organizations are providing in terms of academics for students, as well as training for hands-on careers. So that's, that's still a work in progress. I'm hoping we'll have a prototype example of that very soon, and I will share that with the board as soon as we have that. And finally, and I shouldn't say finally, but we did get our state NAEP report. That's the national, that's the national report card, so to speak. Wisconsin kinda held with the state average in reading. We were, we dropped a bit in Wisconsin for reading. That's a, that's a, it's a statistically significant drop, so that is a concern. Oh, on the other hand, math, we're doing very well on, well exceeding the, the national average. When you look at our, our school district scores, we are, you know, slightly above state averages in, in reading and math, but that, that is certainly a concern with the reading situation, and I think it obviously deserves some more review as to what, what might be going on in terms of, of those particular scores. So, but again, math, and, and in this district, we have a very, very strong math scores at fourth, eighth, and, and also on ACT scores, so we're good there. But that, that is something that I think we'll continue to keep our eye on and see what, what needs to be done there.
Make adjustments, yeah.
Yep, yep. And finally, I'd like my thanks to Pat Madden. Pat hired me, was one of the hiring team 10 years ago, and I appreciate that. And she's been a wonderful supporter of a lot of the neat things we're doing in this district. And I am a bit worried, though, because now I am on my own for the, the Roberts rules, the parliamentary. So I knew I could always, if I wasn't quite sure, I could just look at Pat and she would give me the thumbs up or not.
That's right.
So now I'm gonna have to assign someone else to, to take that on. But thank you, Pat, for, for your support for all these years, and you've been a, a absolutely wonderful board member to work with.
Thank you, my pleasure.
And that's my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one thing, the reorganization meeting that will be held for the board on the 23rd of April. Just a reminder, on April 20, we're asking you to get your surveys in to Sue, so that, you know, we can figure out who will be assigned to what committee and who will chair those committees, and that will be given to the next president. So, thank you for getting those in, in time. So, just needed to get that date in there, Todd.
Okay, thank you. Yep, so I think that's it, that's my report.
At least I didn't try to pretend to be you.
No, that's, probably a good thing for you.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to our committee reports. That's where we do a lot of the heavy lifting. This month, we start with finance and facility, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. We had three action items to go over tonight. The first is approval of budget transfers and amendments. At the time the budget is adopted, the budget contains the administration's best estimates of the district's revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. As the year proceeds, additional information becomes available that impacts the sources available to the district and the planned uses of district funds. A combination of budget transfers and amendments to the original budget were presented for approval. The committee approved the 2017-18 budget amendment as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey? Discussion? Pretty small changes, which didn't really, kinda shifting pots, more or less. All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgartner?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
The second action item is the approval of 2018-2019 student fees. The committee was presented a recommendation for the student fees for the 2018-19 school year. There will be no changes in fees for the 2018-19 school year, with the exception of those mandated as part of the district's food service audit and other federal food service guidelines. Student meals will increase 10 cents, and adult meals will increase 15 cents. The committee approved the recommended fees, including the student food, food service fees as presented, and authorized the administration to adjust student food service fees to be in compliance of federal guidelines, and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
I want to say this was the last approved motion by Ms. Madden at the, at the FNF meeting. She moved it, and then someone else seconded it, and it passed 5-0. I would say if, if, I would, I'd hate to be opposed to Ms. Madden on the last motion. I would say if, if, I would, I'd hate to be opposed to Ms. Madden on the last motion. She, she executed FNF. So if lightning was a strike and I walked out after opposing that, I'd, I'd stay inside.
I don't know if I've ever heard an opinion like that given. I vote.
You're supposed to vote for your constituents' purposes.
That's right.
I'm scared, I'm scared of the Lord, too.
Any discussion on the student fees? We did have a, as always, a good comparison chart between all the districts. Sussex Hamilton actually provides that, that service. So we kind of share in some of the heavy duty lifting. I think we're, we're outsourced for trying to get the best price on paper. So, but yeah, so we thoroughly look at all the fees every year, and we're able to compare it to all the local districts, so. All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
The third action item was the approval of district purchase of property. On your desk this evening, you'll find the offer for purchase of the Hasi property adjacent to the district's partial at the intersection of Merrill Hills and MacArthur Road. Financial details of the purchase are included in the purchase summary. Following the closed session at the Finance and Facilities meeting on Monday evening, it was determined to bring this item to, to the full board for action. I would move, I move to approve the purchase of the Hasi property as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
We just received this tonight, so I just do have, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. So you've got two different prices on here for this appraisal, ours and Hasi. Which one are we going with? Have a chance to read this.
The one in the gray.
One in the gray. Oh, that is the, the one you're resting on then. Okay. So it's basically ours.
Right. I mean, there's a combination of the buildable acres and non-buildable acres, and just, just for reference, you know, the, the bypass is coming through here. This is the area that's allocated for access to our property. So they allocated access to our property on property that the district doesn't currently own. So the proper way to do this is, is to make an offer to the current owner in advance of, of the bypass to make sure we have access to, you know, we don't have to try and take it by eminent domain or some other unacceptable way. We want to make sure the property owner gets a fair offer. And, and, and to my understanding, the property owner accepted our offer. As far as the financial side of it, there were some minor contingencies. So he was treated fairly in his eyes because he accepted the offer. And whether we build a school there or have the product, property developed, we need that access area.
And no budget impact because the funds we received from the DOT, and although we expect to receive a lot more, the funds we did receive this fiscal year would, would more than cover this cost.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes, it's hard to tell on this sheet exactly where the property is. Could you tell me exactly where the property is?
It's on the back one.
Yeah.
That's better.
Oh, the back one. Okay. Thank you, Pat. I didn't notice that.
It's the TT MacArthur Avenue.
So the property we're acquiring, the property we're acquiring is on this area here next to TT.
Yeah, okay. I see that. I know where that is. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Madden?
Looking at this map, I don't want parents or students to be alarmed, but I think it should be retention pond, not detention pot.
There's a question mark there. Good one.
In lieu of expulsions.
Suspension, expulsions. We'll do a collective.
Nice place for a year.
You are one for details, Ms. Madden. You, your detail, your eye for details will be missed.
But, but we really don't know that for sure.
What? Oh, yeah.
Mr. Cook isn't here tonight to explain to us his new detention pot.
There you go.
It's your Bensburger.
Other discussion, thoughts, comments on the offer to purchase the Hasi property? Mr. O'Brien?
I'm, I support this, besides I motioned for it, but one of the things that was important to me, and I, and I asked Mr. Clark to reach out to the city. We do need to work with the city in terms of trying to convince or making sure that we put this in the lowest cost way for city water and city sewer. The present plan is to build the bypass without making provisions for that in advance of paving, you know. They really should make provisions for access to sewer and water before building the bypass. It makes no sense to build a brand-new bypass and have to tear it up, disrupt traffic, so we can add water and sewer later at three times the cost. So we haven't gotten any assurances or cooperation from the Department of Transportation on this issue, and that's just crazy. And I think with the city's help, we could probably get this issue addressed, and we should also be talking to our, whoever we can, because it's just a waste of money for everybody involved, because this land will be developed someday, and it will have sewer, city sewer and city water. It's the last large piece of undeveloped land in the city of Waukesha. It's a very valuable piece of land, and whether we build a school there or someone builds something else, it's going to have city sewer and city water.
And, and us purchasing this property helps to make it easier for this to come to fruition. At least we're doing our part to make it as easy as possible, if, if it passes.
We, we have been in discussions with the city, and Mr. Clark and I are meeting with the city on a number of different things tomorrow, and this will be brought up again. There are some solutions. We are still continuing to look at the, the DOT to fund this as well, so that is still on the table. But for one, one way or another, you're correct, it would be nice to get it done before they pave the road.
Right.
Okay, other comments or discussion on the purchase of the Hasi property over by our TT and MacArthur, to add on to our TT and MacArthur property? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
Couple of information items tonight. We did do our monthly budget report. The committee was presented in the budget report for the month of March. $19,65,477 was reported in the general fund revenue. $10,728,416 was expended during the month. $2,808,661 was reported in the special education fund revenue, and $2,375,065 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. The other information item is facility planning. The administration updated the committee on upcoming dates and events to be mindful as we enter the next phase of the facility planning process. A community-wide facility survey will be mailed out next week to every home in the district, which response is due by May 9th. I would ask that the citizens of the district be watching for the survey, not only in the mail, but electronically, if you email, and please provide their feedback to assist us with our facility planning. With that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mrs. Brusink.
Thank you. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held last night, April 10th, 2018, at 6:00. There is one action item, two information items, and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. First is the approval of supplemental digital math resources for K-8. In 2015, a three-year subscription was purchased for two digital math programs, DreamBox for grades K to 3 and Ten Marks for grades 3 to 8, with the subscription ending at the conclusion of the 2017-18 school year. A digital resource review has been underway to determine the current best option for students. For the last two months, the district's math team has been updating the board on the status of their extensive research around the data and teacher feedback, which has led to the recommendation to purchase the following. DreamBox for grades K-3 with a three-year contract, and Ten Marks for grades 4 and 5 within a one-year contract. ST Math for grades 6 and 7, and Ten Marks for grade 8 with a one-year contract. Our revised executive summary is on your desk tonight, correcting the recommendations which had previously been sent to the board. On a vote of 4-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the purchase of the supplemental digital math resources for K-8 as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
I will add one thing in case somebody's wondering about the one-year contract. We had feedback from Rose and, and Dan on this two meetings ago, and it's really just, everything was working fine. It's just a matter of, are we getting enough people to use the Ten Marks to make it worth a three-year? And we're really going to be, it's almost like a beta test year to see if we can get a little bit more application of these services to the kids. Where used, where, where it is used, it is used well. So it's a matter of population using it rather than whether it's anything wrong with the program. So.
So was there some, did administration come up with some ideas of how to go about doing that?
I would have to defer on that.
Okay. Jody, did you have any discussion on that?
I think we'll continue to monitor teacher use, because this is a supplemental resource, it supplements our core curriculum. And so, again, looking at student usage and teacher usage over next school year will allow us to determine, it didn't, wasn't necessarily a cost savings for us for the three-year subscription, so we're going to go one year at a time and then continue to analyze as we go.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, then we have a few information items.
This is, we have to take a vote on this.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion on this? So we are looking to approve the supplemental digital math resources for grades K through 8. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on that?
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
Couple of information items tonight. We did do our monthly budget report. The committee was presented in the budget report for the month of March. $19,65,477 was reported in the general fund revenue. $10,728,416 was expended during the month. $2,808,661 was reported in the special education fund revenue, and $2,375,065 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. The other information item is facility planning. The administration updated the committee on upcoming dates and events to be mindful as we enter the next phase of the facility planning process. A community-wide facility survey will be mailed out next week to every home in the district, which response is due by May 9th. I would ask that the citizens of the district be watching for the survey, not only in the mail, but electronically, if you email, and please provide their feedback to assist us with our facility planning. With that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mrs. Brusink.
Thank you. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held last night, April 10th, 2018, at 6:00. There is one action item, two information items, and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. First is the approval of supplemental digital math resources for K-8. In 2015, a three-year subscription was purchased for two digital math programs, DreamBox for grades K to 3 and Ten Marks for grades 3 to 8, with the subscription ending at the conclusion of the 2017-18 school year. A digital resource review has been underway to determine the current best option for students. For the last two months, the district's math team has been updating the board on the status of their extensive research around the data and teacher feedback, which has led to the recommendation to purchase the following. DreamBox for grades K-3 with a three-year contract, and Ten Marks for grades 4 and 5 within a one-year contract. ST Math for grades 6 and 7, and Ten Marks for grade 8 with a one-year contract. Our revised executive summary is on your desk tonight, correcting the recommendations which had previously been sent to the board. On a vote of 4-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the purchase of the supplemental digital math resources for K-8 as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
I will add one thing in case somebody's wondering about the one-year contract. We had feedback from Rose and, and Dan on this two meetings ago, and it's really just, everything was working fine. It's just a matter of, are we getting enough people to use the Ten Marks to make it worth a three-year? And we're really going to be, it's almost like a beta test year to see if we can get a little bit more application of these services to the kids. Where used, where, where it is used, it is used well. So it's a matter of population using it rather than whether it's anything wrong with the program. So.
So was there some, did administration come up with some ideas of how to go about doing that?
I would have to defer on that.
Okay. Jody, did you have any discussion on that?
I think we'll continue to monitor teacher use, because this is a supplemental resource, it supplements our core curriculum. And so, again, looking at student usage and teacher usage over next school year will allow us to determine, it didn't, wasn't necessarily a cost savings for us for the three-year subscription, so we're going to go one year at a time and then continue to analyze as we go.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, then we have a few information items.
This is, we have to take a vote on this.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion on this? So we are looking to approve the supplemental digital math resources for grades K through 8. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on that?
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Barb?
Thank you. We have an Avid update. Advancement via individual determination is a research-based college readiness framework that provides targeted assistance to students in the academic middle. Avid improves organizational and study skills, develops critical thinking and collaboration, and exposes students to college. Amanda Wagner, our district Avid coordinator, gave us an update on all schools and their phases of implementation with Avid. Next is our middle school level programming update. A transition occurred in 2016-2017 school year that allowed for a more flexible elective experience while maintaining certain requirements by the DPI. Now, students are provided multiple pathways to their elective experience. Our middle school principals updated the board on this programming, as well as upcoming ideas for different house and scheduling structures. And lastly, we have a student achievement update. STEM Randall Campus, SAIL School Administrators Institute for Transformational Leadership is a continuous improvement cycle that all of our students are now use, all of our schools are now using. This cycle includes a theory of action that is developed by looking at data and the needs of the school. As a team, the Randall staff use these areas of need to target their STEM development with staff.
because they were read a month ago or two months ago in one case. And we have six for first reading. So, beginning with the action items, and I will, unless you have something different, I will, I will make one motion for the action items, all of them. First one is policy 8310, Public Records. Quite simply, and you've been through this before, this is to insert the use of the Safe at Home program by using the statewide address that is designated for that person who should not be identified where he or she can be reached. And that is the sum and substance of 8310 under public records. Policy number 9700, a little bit meatier on this one. This is, the policy is revised to provide districts with clarification in the wake of confusion or inappropriate allegations levered against districts for campaigning in favor of a, whoops, reading the wrong, wrong part of it here. Clarification in the wake of confusion and appropriate, yeah. Campaigning for referendum questions when in fact it was a third party using the district's name, logo, et cetera, to create appearance of an official communication. Districts should note, however, that adopting this revision does not constitute registering or protecting the district's name or logos. Rather, the purpose is to deny any connection and make it clear the district's position on that issue. Also added language is concerning the use of the district's identifying marks, logos, mascots, et cetera, on independent organizations' materials in advocacy or against a referendum question. When we read that last, at the reading, wanted to just identify this because we did make adjustments in here someplace. There we go. There was a phrase in here which said, "Any such approval granted for whatever cause or group shall not be construed as an endorsement of said cause or group by this board." That seemed to be contradictory to what we were really trying to accomplish there. So we just basically eliminated that whole phrase. And it ends up without the approval of the superintendent or his delegated representative. So that's all, that's the only change on that part of it. The rest of the policy is as it was given to us. And I think you will also find, specific evidence, not evidence, reference on the very back page about the referendum advocacy piece. Okay. Any other questions? Kurt, got a question? Pardon?
I just want to make sure that we're careful.
It's in there? Okay, thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry. Sure, I read it. Thank you.
Well, this specifically saying advertising or promoting.
Right.
I'm thinking the difference might be where someone uses that the school district is endorsing or party to this particular event. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's the difference there. I mean, if they're saying, you know, Waukesha School District is planning this event and it may or not be something that the board would approve of. That's not what this policy says. It says the district's name. Districts are not, are not to use for advertising or promoting. You can use the district's name as long as you're not saying it's in a restricted way. I mean, I think you should be making it more clear that no one should, the superintendent, I think it has to be a clear policy that the superintendent. A better way of doing it is saying, when someone calls the superintendent, people are right to defend speech rights, but the school district of Waukesha is not engaged or promoting this. And I think that should be more of what the policy should say.
Well, that's basically the line that we deleted based on your comments last month, Kurt.
Right. Because we found it confusing, actually. We found it confusing, that's why we deleted it.
Yeah, so I'm willing to rework this, but maybe, maybe.
I do think it's free speech restricted as it's written today. When you say you can't use the school district of Waukesha name.
What if we restricted it to, if you read that whole sentence and took the name out of it? Logo, other assets of the district, facilities, technology, or communication networks. Now, that's not free speech.
But it does state specifically for adverti, I passed mine over to, for advertising, not for just discussion.
Advertising and promoting.
Not.
Promoting is different than advertising. The advertising is just free speech. Advertising is free speech. Promoting is free speech. So, I can. It's going to create problems as we had in this last. Without my permission. And it's kind of heavy-handed, right? I want this and they mention the school district of Waukesha, therefore they're not.
Mrs. Reinichek?
Did we have legal confer with us on this?
I don't know that we had on this one. We did on another one coming up, but not on this one. We can do that.
Probably we should.
We can, we can bring that to the committee meeting next week. Okay, we'll defer that to the committee meeting.
So that's not part of your motion, Mr. Baumgart?
That's correct, it will not be part of the motion.
Yeah, I guess I had my mic off most of the time. I'm sorry. But, like I said, I think it's important that we do this right. It's not just a legal issue, it's a community relations.
I have an argument with that.
Yeah, community relations issue and things like that.
Okay, you're making, I think, a clearer point of what your point, clearer effort of what your point is than we understood a month, yeah, a month ago. So, I appreciate that.
Mr. McCaffrey?
What exactly is the concern, I mean, about our name being used?
The.
I mean, where's the policy?
The real genesis of this policy really did start with groups that were advertising for referendums.
Right.
And that's, and that's why that paragraph on the very last page.
Right, okay.
Is there. Because there were issues where people were saying things and it was being misunderstood because, you know, the district can't promote their own referendum.
Right. Okay.
And that became an issue.
Right.
So they wrote this policy, make it clear as to what we should be doing.
Right, and now we're moving beyond that. Right? Because that's where we're moving to referendum. Right? We're moving beyond that. I mean, the concern is about the march and they're using our names.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
That's where this is stemming from. And I, I mean, I totally understand it. And I know that some people in the, in the community had no problem with them using their name, but those same people would have a major problem if the local gun show used our name. So, I think that it has to be addressed. We don't want it to look like this body is endorsing anything beyond our scope. That is how. That's what the policy should read. Right. Right, it doesn't read that way. Beyond the scope of this. I mean, I totally understand where this is coming from and the complaints that were had, but, you know, the people that would like to use our name would also have a heart attack if different organization was using our name. So, it's got to go both ways. I think it's worth a legal review. Right. I do recall in another district I was in, and the school district name was used to advertise a X-rated website. And the, the attorney at that time said, "No, you have a right to protect that name." Yeah, no, definitely. I think that we have a right to protect our name. You know, they filed with whoever was running the website. But, and that was, again, designed to protect the. Right, no, exactly. I just, I just want to make sure that it's, you know, fair and even across, that we're not worried about certain organizations and not worried about other.
We will pursue this, but I will point out that the paragraph as it was read at the first reading, the first, first reading, first reading, would have gone through the Neola's legal department.
That's true.
Mr. Brian?
Yeah, I think Mr. McCaffrey is, and I think you guys are understanding where I'm coming from, the same as with Mr. McCaffrey. Sure, if we're going to make it so that people can, like, we can't, we don't have enforcement powers over people, really. All we can do is be a bully, for the most part. So if our name is on a poster at a gun show, what are we going to do about it? Not too much. The same thing we do with anybody else that uses our name. Yeah, we can't stop them from doing it. I mean, the reality is, you know, the reality is, it's kind of like laws that are made that people are only going to follow, that follow laws, and the other ones are just going to do it anyway. What's, what's your power to make us not use this? And, and so we've got to be careful in what we choose to do and how it, how it works out in the community. You know, we don't want to come across as, you know, threatening our own community constituents. That could be supporters or non-supporters. I really don't care whether they're supporters or non-supporters. It's about free speech. And yes, you got to take the good with the bad when it comes to free speech. I mean, that's just the way it works. But I think it would be worth to ask the law firm, what, what do we have? What, you know, what can we do if, if an organization that really is offensive in, to everyone would use the name? What, what can we do if they're like using our name as, hey, we're sponsoring this event that we know shouldn't happen? I mean, what, what rights do we have, you know, to?
Mr. Brian?
I just think I remember that this last line was what I was pushing for, which was, and that ended up getting struck out, is that we just want to make it clear that when people use our name, the school district of Waukesha is not sponsoring that use.
That's just the opposite of the way we read your comments.
Yeah.
But we'd have to say that.
We'll, we'll have.
We'll take it back.
We'll have a comeback. Mrs. Reinichek, you didn't have a chance to talk on this yet.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you. I was just going to say, if we were to have something and we said Harley Davidson is going to be there, or Harley Davidson backs us, and we use their logo. If you're using a big name and a logo, I'm sure someone has had this problem before, and so I'm sure it's written somewhere that we can just ask.
As a matter of fact, Harley Davidson would make sure that you're using their logo appropriately and you had appropriate permissions. And there are laws that do protect them in the use. So, but we'll, we'll bring that back to committee and.
We'll do that.
We misinterpreted, Mr. Brian, what you'd said at the last meeting is what I think.
I just want to say the difference between Harley Davidson and the school district of Waukesha, Harley Davidson is like Walt Disney and everybody else. They have very, they're private, they're privately owned entities. They're not publicly owned entities like we happen to be. Right. Well, we don't want our brand associated with just anything.
Yeah.
We're still a brand.
We'll, we'll make sure.
Like Harley Davidson.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that we'll ask our attorneys what, what rights and privileges we have.
We will bring it up next Tuesday at 6:00. You're all welcome into the meeting. And, you better.
So just to review, the first, why don't you review the?
I've got one more to go.
Okay, there's the first one that you first started out with, that's still on the table.
I'll, I'll review that.
Is that the 17th?
Yes.
You sure?
That whole discussion was part of your motion?
I haven't got to the motion yet.
I sort of been wondering. Thought you started out.
No, I will make a motion at the end of these three incorporating two of the three.
Okay.
Four, only three of the four, actually, because you'll see that.
Just go ahead, Bill.
Hang in there, trust me for a minute, will you?
Go with it, just go with it.
Okay. Revisions to policy 3122.01, Drug-Free Workplace for Professional Staff, and 4122.01, Drug-Free Workplace for Support Staff. This was, this was reviewed at a previous meeting in February, actually, for the full board meeting to raise some concerns. Administration and the Policy Committee reviewed the concerns and was advised by legal counsel not to change the wording from the way it was presented in January. So, we are avoiding, by the way, yeah, we are avoiding reference to, quite simply, we're not, we do not want to get into trouble with HIPAA. Let's make it really simple. So we're not changing the wording. This was, in a minor thing, there was also a typographical error on the spelling of a word, so that's been cleared up. If you want copies of the revised one with the new word on it, I'll give them to you later. Any questions on policies 3122.01 and 4122.01? Okay. Therefore, I will move for acceptance of policy 8310, Public Records, as revised, and policy 3122.01 and 4122.01 on Drug-Free Workplace as previously worded.
You're second to that.
Second. I thought he was withdrawing 8310.
Ninety-seven hundred.
He was withdrawing ninety-seven hundred.
Ninety-seven, okay.
Ninety-seven hundred, yep.
All right. Now I got it, thank you.
And we've, we went to this format just to try and be a little bit more efficient, so we didn't have.
Worked this time, didn't it?
Yeah. But when we have 20, like, we've had times where we've had 20 action items and instead of going and having 20 separate votes, we've, yeah. But, but we should ask, does anybody want to have any of these pulled out for separate consideration? Okay, further discussion? All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey. Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Okay. Now we have some first readings for you. Six, six policies, first reading to be brought back to you in May. Policy 7540.01, Technology Privacy. Some of these you're going to find are quite simply wording. And by the way, the technology ones, I think there's four or five of them in here, have been reviewed by Steve, our technology guru. So this one, 7540.01, is simply to emphasize to users of, users of our district technology that they really have no reg, no positive belief that there is confidentiality involved there. Privacy is, it's our equipment, it's our network, it's our system. They can't do things on it and expect privacy. A lot of wording in here and a lot of options selected, but that's the sum and substance of it, and we haven't changed anything in it from what was given to us by Neola. Okay. 7540.03, Student Education, Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. Yeah, I just read most of the wording changes right there because they changed the title of this one to Student Education, Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. There is also language in here about code of conduct and privacy again. And the 7540.04 is exactly the same, except this is for our staff. And there might be a little bit more for the staff than there is for the teachers. But again, district technology resources, terminology changing. Hacking has been expanded to harvesting, digital piracy, data mining, et cetera, so on. 540.04, right. 7540.06 is, I'll get back down to it. Staff email. Title has changed to District Issued Staff Email Account. Opposed revisions here exclude a change in title. The first paragraph has been revised to provide a clear statement of the policy's purpose and to explain the district issued email is for conducting official business, which may include communicating with colleagues, students, and so on. Language has also been added to address storage and retention, reminding people that there are things that will be in the email that must be retained as public records. Other things maybe don't have to be retained. Sure Steve knows about that because he sends stuff out five times a day, that's some of which you have to keep and some not. Seventy-five forty-point-oh-seven is about student email. New policy creates a new document specific to students, because some of the content from the staff policy is not applicable to students. Policy is needed because we are issuing email accounts for our students. And, policy eight-six oh five, use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees who operate board-owned or operated vehicles. And this is a lengthy one to talk about, uh, I mean, the, the revisions are lengthy to talk about. By the way, I have to back up. The student policy on email is a new policy. It is not a revision to existing one. It is a new policy. Thank you, sorry about that. Back to this one. Terminology again. There, there was a term in here about highway. And people were trying to figure out what's a highway. And it could be anything down to a dirt road, be honest with you. So they have eliminated the use of the term highway from this. That's really the biggest thing that happens in this policy, by the way. There's also a reference on the bottom that, uh, mobile telephone, which is used by federal regulations, includes two-way radios and CBs. The policy revisions include language to permit the use of two-way radio or CB that is installed in buses, because it's part of their, the work they're performing and communicating that way with district transportation, school buses.
Can, I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which one?
I understand on, on that particular one.
Okay.
Um, understand you can't, um, send or receive text or emails and so on. But with, can you, with Bluetooth, can you use hands-free for an incoming phone call? Or?
It, it, it doesn't say can't. Uh, by the way, the term reading and receiving is one of the changes.
Yeah.
It used to say receiving. And you're not to blame for anything that has been sent to you and you're receiving.
You can't block that.
But you can't.
No, no, I understand that, but I mean, say, if I am, am between schools or whatever, and I get a call via, via hands-free.
I don't believe that is excommunicated, so to speak, here.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, because it seems like the minute I get in my car, I get a call from somebody. There's some issue, so.
Bluetooth is in there.
Maybe you should just, it's in there.
Well, I thought about it.
Where is it?
Right in the first sentence. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I'd like to be recognized. Legally, you're liable if you're communicating on your phone, period.
It's a legal thing.
Yes. So whether it's Bluetooth or not, uh, you're distracted in the conversation. And my previous employer was like, it was absolutely, no, no. If you get a phone call, you pull off the side of the road and you manage the call. You weren't allowed to, to take any calls, Bluetooth, hands-free, whatever. And that's what this new policy reads. And I think that's because of the liability associated with distracted driving.
It is outlawed here, in terms of.
But it does say I can use a CB, though, right?
I'm not sure the CB is, should be allowed either.
It does not include the, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to.
I'm not sure that the CB.
It could be a lot more fun, but I just don't know.
Heavy antenna? Need a big whipping antenna though.
Wait, hold on, let's, one, one at a time. Mr. O'Brien?
I, that's, to be honest with you, I think if we looked into the liability associated with using CBs, that, that probably would be an issue as well, so. But I do know the phone thing is an absolute no-no. I mean, that's, it's evolved to that. It's distracted driving.
Yeah. I mean, because it, it refers to handheld mobile, but if it's not handheld, you know, I'm just wondering. I, I just want to make sure there's no question about.
Mr. Como's correct, and it says Bluetooth-enabled devices, that's hand-free, so.
But that's for the sending or reading of text messages or emails. But I, so I, that's why I didn't know if it got down to.
We'll make sure that Bill.
Mobile calls.
Uh, will, at, at our, before our next, this is our first reading.
That's correct.
So we'll need to make sure, what I would recommend is that we make sure that we understand the laws. Uh, state laws, federal laws. And that we craft this around those laws to be in coordinate, you know, with that. And, you know, we need to make sure that, that we're in line with, with those.
Yeah. And, and texting and reading emails, I mean, that's clear. I mean, everyone knows that's not prohibited by law, either with this or without this.
Mrs. Brzink?
Yeah, it says here that it, um, employees who operate board-owned or operated vehicles, I mean, to me, it should be anyone.
Well, this is a policy for the district.
But this is for our district.
Pardon me?
This is the policy for the district.
I understand that. I understand that. But, you know, we have teachers that go from building to building, and even in their own cars.
But they're on their personal car, though.
I understand that, but.
Mr. O'Brien?
Say something about it.
Just because it's not a law doesn't mean you won't be found liable if you're a distracted driver and you're on Bluetooth communication and you have an accident.
Oh, absolutely.
So, the law isn't the issue so much as the whether there's a liability associated with being on your phone, and are you a distracted driver, and you have an accident.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to prevent. Yep. Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
That concludes my report.
Got.
There's a number on it.
Got's, any other, these are all discussion items? Are there any other points that people would like to bring up for the committee's consideration as we go through it one more time in committee?
Just a, just a question, because I'm, I'm concerned about this last item. You know, what about district employees who, by assignment, travel between buildings and, you know, they use their own car? We, we certainly want them to be as safe as if they were using it in, you know, a, a district car. I mean, I think it should be a reminder, not necessarily a policy, but we should really.
The state law also controls the, the texting and the emailing. If they make a call, I don't know that it, it prohibits that, but, um,
Safe.
There would be some.
But let me ask you this. If, if an employee is on the way from, from site one to site two and there's an accident, are, you know, could we be responsible because they were?
Typically not, because they're in their own car. Their insurance is, is, covers it first.
Even though they, they were on a district assignment?
Yep. It's, it's commuting. Just consider commuting.
Okay.
We might have to look into that.
I mean, we're going to get sued no matter what.
Bill, you have your work cut out for you before the next committee meeting.
We will, we will look into that one as well.
There's going to be.
We need to.
Tuesday, everybody's welcome. Pat, you want to come stop by?
You're, you're going to miss this, Pat.
You know she is.
Oh, this is just great.
We'll have a special front, we'll have a special front seat for you at the committee meeting.
Okay.
Anything else, Bill?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your report. Moving on to our technology committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening. Thank you, Mr. Brzink.
And then our final, um, actually, that does conclude all of our committee reports. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future board or committee meeting, uh, agenda items?
I, let me just add, add.
Go ahead, Mr. Bunkert.
The thing that we've been working on with the, the terminology used in agendas.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to Joe about this just yesterday. We're gonna, putting together a memo. And, 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 as I said, is that that will be delivered to administration in a training session of some kind of that memo.
Okay.
With the definitions.
So it's administrative guidelines, essentially?
No, it's not going to be in the guidelines. It's just going to be an operating memo at this point.
Oh, okay.
I, we don't believe there's any policy that dictates the, the cover sheet, but we want to make them all the same, because we've had confusions over what's a discussion item, what's information, what could be acted on, so.
We want to clear that up, and that's the method we're going to be using.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Mr. O'Brien?
I just want, you know, last time we talked about the idea of having an agendized item related to the issue that was spoke about tonight, without going into too much detail. And I know we're having a work session on that, but I believe that work session, we should be focusing on what type of action we could put as a board up to a vote at a future board meeting that would maybe have the consensus of the board. You know, obviously, if we pass something and it's a five-four vote, that's not real smart. And, um, so on that work session, I think it'd be a good idea to try and develop a consensus-type position, and something that we could take the WASB, uh, as a WASB resolution, which I have, has way more influence than what the school district of Waukesha says. I know our community would like, some people in our community would like us to take a strong stand, but the reality is, we need to take the best stand we can take that fits what fits Waukesha and has the most impact.
Any other ideas or suggestions? Okay, thank you for those. We do not have a need for closed session B, item B. However, we do, I believe, need C and D, is that correct, Todd? Or C, no, C is, C is not. We're taking care of an open session, okay.
So it's only D.
So only D?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Baumgart?
I will adjourn, move we adjourn to executive session for Wisconsin statutes nineteen-point-eight-five, parentheses, one, parentheses, C, to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over the government body, over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Will you take a roll call vote on that, Sue?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart. Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. We will be going into that closed session immediately, but I did want to make our people in the audience aware that we may reconvene into open session after this, depending upon what happens in closed sessions. So, um, I just wanted to let people be aware of that. Otherwise, everybody have a good evening, and we'll go into closed session immediately.